I'll make the order, ask you please to stand for a moment. Silence. And after much, we're gonna have a student and I'll introduce her to you. Please. All right, we have tonight a fifth grade student from Broadview Elementary. She has her little sister, she can come up if she wants to as well. This is Ellie Lyle and her little sister Ava. And she's gonna lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ellie. Very much. We'd like to welcome everyone. Please, James, that you've silenced your cell phones. We'll get started so that we don't have us going off during the meeting. Maybe we'll start the meeting out with our office spotlight, Dr. Holman.
Yes, so each month that we will, with our board meetings, we will now begin to start spotlighting our schools in addition to a local partner in education that makes contributions to our school, and then in addition to that, our departments here at the central office, so that we can begin to celebrate, do more celebratory notions throughout the course of the year. So tonight, we have Broadview Elementary School, but before Stevens comes, we're gonna have Title I to share with us this crab tree, and then we will then move afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. When he asked, well, I had asked him to talk about ESER and that, and he said, well, he said, I'm just gonna move the whole agenda, and I'm gonna let you talk about Title I and assessments. And I said, I have a really big favor. There's a U-Haul in my driveway that's leaving my house about 6:00 a.m. in the morning. Can I come up first and get it all out of the way, and then get home and start loading up? So, thank you for allowing me to do that. Title I, you all approved the CFA back in April. Nothing has changed. We got our allocations. Finance Office completed our final expenditure reports, and carryover got dropped in. So our schools are starting to get their allocations and starting to spend their funds. And everything's still on track with Title II-A and our coaches, and Title III with our E.L. teachers, and Title IV with our stream. And I think you're all aware that Carter Pinkleton has now taken over that position. So you're gonna see her out and about in that stream van. Assessments. We have received preliminary reports. They are embargoed right now. We are in an appeal phase. And on Friday, Kim, Leah, and I, and maybe Dr. Holman, we're going to Tellahoma. They've never really shown us how to do appeals and what can be appealed, so the state's now hosting meetings. And so we're gonna go to that meeting on Friday and learn if there is anything for us to appeal. It could be something as simple as maybe a child got coded as absent, and they weren't absent, and it hit our graduation rate. We don't really know what we're gonna be looking at. But we're gonna go to that appeal meeting on Friday, and then once they become unembargoed, Dr. Holman can send out the results how he wants them to be shared with you. So, so that's a quick, real quick on assessments. The state has said, we were really hoping we were gonna go online this year all across the board, especially since they made our third graders should take the retake online. I thought, oh, we're gonna all be online. No, afraid not. Last year, we opted into second grade assessments. I talked to Ms. Tucker. We're gonna opt into second grade assessments again this year. So second grade will be paper pencil, as well as grades three through five will be paper pencil. And then eighth through ELC, yes, eighth through ELCs will be online as they have been. So I was really hoping we were gonna be online. I think that would've sort of expedited getting our scores back a little bit quicker. The state decided not to do that. So, another year, and maybe we'll be online next year, we'll see. And that window will be ELCs, obviously Franklin County on block schedule. They take their first round in December, and then everybody will be taking their two through ELCs late April, early May. So, and I'll give you more updates as that time comes. ESER. Finance was able to get our final expenditure reports done. So we got to see some carryover, and we're really excited about this. There was a little bit extra in 2.0. So we gave North, South, Franklin County High School, and Huntland Band Directors about $4,000 to buy a instrument or instruments, whatever they could get. And I know it's not a lot of money when you're looking at band instruments, but it's a little something that we can say, hey, we are supporting our band programs. The HVAC project is still in ESER 2.0. Those funds have to be obligated by September 30th, expended by December. They're already obligated. So we're gonna get those spent. And then we had one project, the softball field at South, it had not been paid out, so it's still in ESER 2.0, and hope to get that expended. And then I'm gonna have Jenny run me a report, gosh, in the next month, to make sure there's not any little bitty funds left in ESER 2.0 that we need to spend, but it should all pretty much be obligated and, I think, taken care of. I think we're pretty good there. 3.0, we still have our learning loss coordinators at our schools. We did lose some just from teachers moving, and due to our issues with personnel and finding teachers, we opted not to replace those in those buildings. But we do still have learning loss educational assistance to help with the things that Ms. Tucker's gonna be talking about in a little bit. Last year, Toby, Dr. Gwen had requested to do tutoring with her students with disabilities. She found other funding last year, so we carried that over to this year. And we were also able to give her an increase so that she's gonna start that in August and carry it through pretty much the entire year. We've also been able to add back the FCHS windows. When that original bid came through in December, it was really, really high. And at that point, we didn't have the funds to do it. When we finished the ESER revisions this year, we had more funds left over. So ESER is putting in about $400,000, and I'm not sure if you all are talking about that later, but I think GP's gonna put in the rest of that once the bid becomes available. We also have the students with disabilities. There is a playground at Cowan. It got started last year. We're just finishing up that bill to get that totally finished. And then, something we're really excited about, when I was talking to Dr. Holman and our team about what we could do with some of these funds, we are adding security to our central office and to our alternative school, and also to KIMFOR to do more of a buzz-in type system. So, and I'm not sure how much of that you've shared, or I don't wanna steal your thunder over there, but I'll let you get into it if you want to. So are there any questions? And then also, the big HVAC and roof projects will continue. ESER 3.0 will have to be obligated by September of '24 with final expenditures by December of '24. So we have a little over a year left with those big funds. So, we're gonna get them all spent down so the state can't get any of those back. Are there any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
You noticed that we have on here to recognize Follow's Restaurant. Follow's Restaurant is one of the restaurants that are located here on the square. Not sure if the community is aware. One of the reasons that we're highlighting them, we are fortunate in our school district that Huntland High School has hydroponics class, and many of the hydroponic lettuce that they're growing down there is actually being served in the Follow Restaurant there on the square. So I just wanted to celebrate that, to acknowledge the great things that are going on in our schools, and to really give that opportunity, because people are not aware of the, what hydroponics is all about, but then to know that you, the very students that we are educating, are the very students that are providing food on our table if we're so going out to Follow's. And then want to just thank Ms. Stevens so much for the work that she's doing at Broadview. I appreciate touring your building, looking at how you made some adjustments there in the building. So thank you so much. And to our leaders today, thank you so much for bringing you and your sister up. That's exactly what we're wanting. So each month, we will have a student from a school that will be doing our pledge. So you all got to start. So thank you so much. Thanks, Mom.
I stood up and introduced already. This is our student representative from LPHS, from Medcap. You're seniors, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're glad to have you with us.
Glad to be here.
We also have one from Huntland, but I don't believe that she could, so maybe next week, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Does that complete your thing?
Yes.
We have a request to address the board of leaders, Carson.
Good evening. My name's okay. I'm here as an advocate for Clark Memorial School. A few years ago, I don't know when exactly this happened, but there was a change made to the bus zones that's been detrimental to my school. And to be honest with you, I've lost sleep and I think that it was done maliciously. Bible Cross and Road begins where it meets Shark Springs Road. And it goes across Winchester all the way to Highway 130, which is the Philip Fomer Parkway. Along that route are eight or nine middle-class subdivisions. And a year ago, a parent came in to want to enroll at Clark Memorial, and they wanted to ride the bus. But it was adamant about coming to Clark Memorial. That's fine, now you're zoned for Clark Memorial. They live approximately a quarter mile off 130. That's if you go across through the city park, across the lake. And before you continue on toward Tellahoma, if you turn right on Bible Cross, they live just right up the street. We looked at the bus zone, and it was zoned for Deckard Elementary. That doesn't make sense. Long story short, since then, I have looked at all nine different neighborhoods. Holly Hills, Franklin Hills, Cherokee Estates, Berry Lake Estates, Meyer Subdivision, Lynch Street, River Lake Manor, Crimson Clover Estates. They were all zoned for Deckard Elementary. It doesn't make sense. What I'm gonna tell you about Holly Hills, I can say about all the neighborhoods, okay? Holly Hills is 1.8 miles from our campus. It's 3.6 to Deckard Elementary. From our campus to Holly Hills, there are no major intersections. You hop off on, I don't, can't remember. That's Old Esther Springs Road, I think. Then you turn left on Philip Fomer 130, and you're at Clark Memorial in one mile. It's 1.8 miles to Clark Memorial, 3.6 to Deckard. That's just one way. No major intersections. Depending on the way you travel to Deckard, you're going through a minimum of three major intersections. There's the four-lane at where Shark Springs and Bible Cross and Cross right there at that gas station at B.R. Williams. There's an intersection at Co-op. And then depending on what route you take, there's at least one more. Could be two more. And I could use that description for all other eight neighborhoods. We need those kids back in our school. I don't know when it was done, why it was done, but it needs to be rectified. Students model for students. And we have a large population of students in my school that need to see classmates from these middle-class families who have valued education. They have, their families have worked hard. They drive nice cars, live in nice homes. They come to school dressed real nicely. We've got, we have a population of students that need to see that. And for them not to be zoned for Clark Memorial does not make sense. When I became cook principal at Clark Memorial 20 years ago, they were zoned for Clark Memorial. They were zoned for many years. I can name multitudes of families who sent their kids to Clark Memorial and rode the bus. And I thought it was rectified. I brought this attention to Mr. Bean, I guess about a year ago. It could've been a little longer. I thought it was rectified, but I had another parent come in last week who'd moved back to Winchester, moved into Franklin Hills, had a sibling who went to Clark Memorial, loved the experience, wanted this child to come to Clark Memorial. Sure, no problem. I wanted him to ride the bus. We looked it up, still zoned for Deckard Elementary. Doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. I wish I knew why it was done and who did it, because what's, what really is disturbing to me is out, some of these neighborhoods may be back in our zone. I haven't had time to look at it, okay? There may be a neighborhood or two that's still, that is back with us. But what really bothered me about the whole thing was that in the middle of these eight, nine neighborhoods is a trailer park, River Lake Trailer Park. And guess where they're still zoned for? Clark Memorial. And now that just, now that really hurts. It hurt me, it hurts my faculty, it hurts my student body, it hurts our students. We need those kids in Clark Memorial for a lot of reasons. Test scores we do one, but being a positive role model for other classmates is, is, I think, the most important. And if it's any way possible, I mean Winchester, Clark Memorial's a Winchester. Winchester neighborhoods should be zoned for Clark Memorial School. That's all I have.
Mr. Carson, have you spoken with Dr. Holman and Jeff Sons?
Yes, sir.
About this?
Yes, sir. I thought, I thought Mr. Bean had resolved it. Obviously, it didn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item A, which is approval of the agenda. Board members, please take a look. Any questions?
Both to approve.
Both to approve. Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Roberts. Call if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Vote that motion carries. Item F, approval of the consent agenda. There's only the minutes from July, I believe, on that agenda.
Both to approve.
Thank you. Both should approve the consent agenda by Ms. Williams. Second by the stones.
Can I ask one question? So, I apologize for missing last month's meeting. So like, so the thing about the code of conduct, it says, for instance, like, board members recommended that one change be made to the code of conduct. I just wondered what it was, or just wanted to suggest that maybe in the future, if it says like, one change, if it would be nice if they would just put in the minutes, like, what that change was, just so that if someone goes back to read it, it's there.
See, I think that was the removal of the corporal punishment from our countywide.
Thank you.
Do you want us to put it back in?
Now, let's start asking that.
I'm gonna go with some, no.
Dr. Holman, that says to the director's report.
Yes. So on director's report, Ms. Foster's gonna speak in regards to personnel. We're both smiling, because several weeks ago, we were both looking at each other. She was looking at me, and I was looking back at her. So she will give that report, and then right after that, Deputy Lieutenant, Ms. Tucker's gonna come, and she's gonna speak in regards to the third grade motion, Ms. Foster.
I think I'm going for a break here. I think, I think there's five pages of that this last month, this last month. But I am very happy to tell you, as of this afternoon, around 10 minutes to four, every certified position is filled. But there's always a fight. We have given up on finding three speech-language pathologists. We've given up on that. And we have given up on finding three guidance counselors this year. But you, we all know, if someone comes in the door, we will find a place for them, for sure. In regard to the support positions, I tried to count before I came in here. There's around 15 open positions. Custodians, educational assistants, a bus driver or two that would really be helpful. And we're seeking someone to fill those positions. I have been working this last week very, very diligently on permits and waivers. That's, that's for people that are in front of these classrooms that do not have the standard, the normal teaching certificate. There are 19 people that I have either applied for a permit or waiver. 16 of those have been approved so far. And the other three will be. They're, they're just pending the leases here and there. But that's the certified staff. So, like Dr. Holman said, about two weeks ago, I was extremely worried, extremely worried, because we have to have the very best person we can find in every classroom. And it was looking extremely dire at that time. But we've been able to hire, I think, very effectively in the last week and 10 days, and I'm hoping to see good, good results.
Ms. Foster, what was the primary reason for us losing four speech-language pathologists this year?
They retired. Three retired, and I think one went to a different student system. Y'all very, very graciously approved a very significant raise for them. And I was hoping we'd be able to attract. We were able to employ one. We'll come back next year and ask to provide more so we can be competitive.
To jog your memory, how far behind were we on salary with the one that left?
The one that went into Lincoln County? I think we're still $6,000 or $8,000 behind.
Are there any legal implications when I have a speech?
Yeah. Dr. Gwen is working very hard to provide the services that we have to provide. We have, we have tweaked some of the special ed services just a little bit in regard to language. We can provide Norse people, people who have an endorsement in a different area as opposed to speech-language, to do the language department. And they're just having to serve more than one school. We will serve them. We will serve them. It's just very difficult, very difficult.
The opportunity lies in so much that speech-pathologists, universities are not producing as many as it used to be. And so therefore, it's not just a Franklin County issue. It is a state, it is a country issue that there's, it's just like with the teacher shortage, not having those individuals that are going into the profession.
I just like that. Which, so you said we're down three guidance counselors. Where are the holds?
All right. We could hire one elementary counselor, one middle school counselor, and one high school counselor. Right now, we have a student advocate. You know, we wanted to have a counselor at all the elementary schools. We were able to employ one for Broadview, and the one that was serving Broadview and Northlake, it stayed at Northlake. We hoped to be able to hire two more elementary counselors for Broadview and, not Broadview, for Swannie and Cowan. It became obvious that we did not have those advocates. The principal at Swannie asked to keep the student advocate that she had, and we have been able to employ one at Cowan just this last week. The woman actually has not come to work yet. She will be coming to work, I think, Monday. I should've mentioned, we have three certified teachers who actually have not been able to report to work yet. We have two that are being held by other student systems. They chose to come to us after they had signed contracts with the other student systems. The other student system can hold on for 30 days. That happened, that's, that's, that's the norm. That's the norm. We understand. We actually have one person who's coming from Colorado who can't be here until next Monday. And we have, there's one more, and I can't remember what her circumstances are. But we should have, if everything will hold together, we should be full as fat with all of our people Monday after Labor Day.
But it's kind of, it's nice to know that there's a counselor full-time at least of all the elementary.
That's still, that's still our goal.
That's huge.
That's still our goal.
But it's great to have someone full-time at each school, so, thank you.
And I would even add to that, to thank the principals, that they have been working endlessly. Interviewing, interviewing, interviewing. And as soon as there's a change in personnel, they are quick to start the interview process. So I do commend them for their work as well. Ms. Tucker?
Another thing that we worried, worried about last year was the third grade retention law. And I tried to keep you updated on where we were with that throughout the process. So I wanted to give you an update tonight on how we fared after we jumped through all the hoops that we needed to jump through to make sure that our students moved through this process as successfully as we could help them. We've been provided with this flowchart, which I really liked, because I think in all of this, we struggled to know the steps that students had to go through. This came out in the summer. It would've been really nice had it come out when we were really trying to deal with it, but it came out after we kind of had it figured out. But it lets you know what happens at the third grade level, what happens at the fourth grade level, to move through the law. I've added some numbers to this so that you'll know how Franklin County fared at each one of these phases. We tested 381 third-grade students. Of course, when we got that initial, the initial test results back, 133 of those students were proficient and moved on to fourth grade. We then started looking at the next step in the process, which was a retake of the assessment. When the assessment was retaken, 26 more students scored proficient and moved on to the fourth grade. The next piece was the appeal process. Parents had to make that appeal to the state themselves. We had 38 parents who appealed. Their students had benchmark assessment scores that we give here. It's a state assessment, the Ames Web Assessment. But their students had scored high enough to show proficiency. And so they appealed to the state, and they were granted that appeal. And so those students moved on to the fourth grade with no holds. Then we had the students who were still either in the approaching or basic score category. Those students had to attend summer school or agree to tutoring if they were in the approaching category. If they were in the below basic category, they had to agree to both. And so in the approaching category, we had 18 students, we had more than 18 who attended summer school, but we had 18 who actually did make the 5% growth. And so they now move on to the fourth grade with no holds in place. And then we had a total of 135 third graders who attended summer school. Out of those 135, we have 116 who will receive tutoring this year through our learning loss educational assistance, the third grade tutors that we put in place last year. And that is, of course, scattered out among our eight elementary schools. We did have, when you look at those total numbers, you're gonna think, some of that doesn't add up. We had students who went to summer school who didn't have to. Their parents just wanted them to get that extra support. We also had parents who filed an appeal who may have had students who attended summer school and didn't need to attend summer school. So that makes our numbers a little off. But at the end of the day, we do have 116 who will receive tutoring. We had 10 who retained, but those were all with parent input. So it felt really good that all of our students had a method to move on to fourth grade, and they all did take advantage of that. The principals worked with me to make sure parents were contacted. Everyone knew exactly where their students stood. We offered an extra week of summer camp so that those students who had to be out for a vacation or a illness were able to meet that 90% attendance requirement. So at the end of the day, I feel good about the services that we were able to provide and the supports. And then, of course, we still have this, this piece in place. They have to show adequate growth on the fourth grade assessment now in order to move into the fifth grade. The state still has not decided what adequate growth looks like, but we will hit the ground running and try to make sure that our students are ready for that challenge. Do you have any questions about that? Sarah?
So, out of the 10 who are retained with parent input, like, did all of those opt for summer school? Or did some of them say, we're just gonna do?
We had, we had some who just said, we're just going to retain our child. Once they saw their scores, they decided that retention with, with input from the school, of course, was the best course of action. When you look at our elementary schools overall at our primary grades, 10 is not an extraordinarily high number across the district. That's, that's one and a half per elementary school for the grade level, and that's pretty average. So we really didn't have any more retained at the third grade level than we did in any of our primary grades, which I was, I was happy about. We did have some misunderstandings with some parents, but I walked them through the process, and we made sure that everybody knew exactly what they had to do at the end of the day. So I think that it went off as well as it could have, given it was very high-stress time for parents and students and teachers and my students. time for parents and students and teachers and myself as well, but we have survived. As always, if you have any questions later, feel free to email me and I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holman.
Dr. Holman, would you like to comment also on the information on school nutrition?
Yes, I will speak in regards to school nutrition. We as a district, we have a policy now in place that limits the number of the dollar amount that students can charge on their lunches. This is to help curb the sheer amount of charges that are accumulated throughout the course of the year, thus keeping the parents well informed of the number of charges that their child may be accumulating. But then in addition to that, even though a child charges, children are never denied a lunch at any point. It's against law, it's something that we as a district and all school districts, I would hope that no one is doing that, but I know in Franklin County, that's not something that's a practice that we're doing. We're here to help mitigate this whole notion of having substantial charges for schools at the end of the year. So therefore, principals are working, the school nutrition department sending out to schools their charges weekly or, yeah, weekly, so that they can contact those parents, because if it's anything, situation I've dealt with before, when your own child is charged, you can bind up all the little extra ice creams for all the buddies in class, you don't realize that they spend that kind of money and then load home, I've got twenty dollars in charges. So we are just trying to curb that by putting that dollar amount there.
Dr. Holman, are we still offering free lunch throughout the county? I'm sorry, free breakfasts throughout the county?
Yes, there are several schools that are getting both free breakfast and free lunch.
And it is the majority of our schools?
Yes, probably four or five different schools.
So there's six.
Six schools that are getting free lunch and free breakfast every day.
So you're just saying, like, you can't buy the extra Doritos, but a kid who's charged it can still get lunch, lunch?
Always, always.
But not a la carte?
But not the a la carte.
That happens to my boys sometimes. Gotta live in San Antonio.
You have anything else?
Oh, I would like to say in front of you, you each have a cup, there in that cup, on the front of that cup, it's to empower, to encourage, and to enhance your water intake. So enjoy. Thank you all so much on behalf of the teachers and support staff. I really appreciate the work that you all put forth, to see that our teachers got the raise that they got, so in collaboration with the county commission, I first stand to say thank you so much, and I greatly appreciate that, so have a glass of water on me.
He's a geezer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item H, which is all business, policy one point four oh four, hills two, and a section for the board, Ms. Lada?
This is one of two policies that was presented last month that you asked me to work on and bring back, and I do think one point four oh four has a change on the second page in regard, as a direct result of a law that was passed, which allows anyone in the audience, if they would like to address the board, in regard to an item on the agenda, that the board has to give them the opportunity to do that. And last, at our last meeting, we were not sure exactly if what we already had in place would cover that. We were advised on page two, I don't know who's running the, who's running the, is that Lori?
Right.
All right, that's what I'm talking about right there, Lori, on lines five through eleven, that's the new section in regard to the new allowance for audience, the audience members to, if they would like to address the board about anything on the agenda, that they have that opportunity to do so.
What's that sign?
Yes, yes. And you can see where I've got it highlighted there, this is, this is opportunities for you as the board to tell me actually what to put in there. On line seven, the total comment period shall be, shall be for no more than, I put in thirty minutes. That can easily be changed, you tell me what to change it to, and I will change it. Going on down on lines eight through eleven, that's the individual people who'd like to address the board, and I had put in here that each speaker shall be given no more than five minutes. That may be too much, may not be enough, it's, we'll, we'll award, whatever you'd like me to put there. Personally, I think three minutes is long enough. Three minutes?
If we do three minutes, that would allow ten speakers.
Right, okay. And the plan is before next month?
But we would also leave, just to be clear, if you, if you go and like, you know, request up here before the board, and still do it, you know, the long form and not necessarily what we're talking about tonight, you know?
Correct, yeah.
Tonight's agenda, you would still be given those five minutes.
Yes, okay, very good. This is just the addressing issues on the agenda. Very good, very good. Also, I'll have to work with Ms. Patty in regard to getting the public notice out to the schools in regard to when your meetings are, when they will be taking place, and how the audience will be able to offer their inputs, so I'll be, I'll be watching for that before next month. The plan right, my plan right now is to put a signing sheet out here in the hall, on the table, anybody that'd like to address, put your name, what you'd like to address, and then right before the meeting, I'll bring that to you, Ms. Walker.
Before the meeting ends?
No.
That's the beginning?
Yes, that's the beginning. And I would think that would need to go up right at the beginning of the agenda, up there when, right before, anybody would want to speak to the board, somewhere up in there.
It wouldn't do a lot of good to hear somebody stops after we've already voted on it.
Yeah, no, okay.
So I have a couple of questions, and so the previous piece talks about how delegations must select just one individual to speak, and that this is like for citizens of like of the county and the school system. Do those same rules apply to this public comment?
No, no. Well, the public comment, they can speak to anything that's on your agenda for that current meeting.
And so you could have like ten people show up from the same organization?
If they wanted to, but they couldn't talk for a year.
There's a very similar line, on page one, look at lines eighteen and nineteen, and on page two, lines ten and eleven discourage that. It's not, those sentences are very similar.
Yes, you're right, thank you, thank you.
But I'm sure, Ms. Walker, it'll be left up to you, if you had three people that want to talk about one particular issue, they don't talk more than three minutes, that's up to y'all.
And then a couple of thirty minutes?
Sure.
And that's it?
Sure.
And the citizens of the county piece, does that apply here?
Yes.
Also?
Are you, you said?
Because the, in the first part, the appearing before the board, ahead of time piece, it says.
I think you need to be a resident of our county to have some type of interest in what we're doing. I mean, I don't know why someone from Nashville wouldn't want to speak before us about a policy change.
I don't know, maybe they would. I mean, it doesn't say anything about it in the public.
I really wouldn't care what that say.
The other policy that you asked me to work on some more was policy six point two, that was over regarding homework, and you may want me to tweak it a little bit more too, that would be fine, on page four. Lauren? Just a little bit right, right there, right there. I think you asked me to put in the last sentence on lines thirteen and fourteen, where teachers are to encourage students to complete the missed classwork and test, and then we needed some kind of time limitation, students are to submit the missed work within five days of their return, the teacher may allow additional time if requested by the student and as deemed appropriate. I tried to tweak that a little bit to give a little bit of leeway.
That's right. And that seems fair, because if someone's sick for a long time, you might be extra a day if I didn't. I think just one word to add back on, sorry, scrolling, it's not going well, on the third page, in line three, says each school should be responsible for implementing school life intervention oriented reports for student attendance to possibly include, it should just say but not be limited to.
I'm sorry, I don't, where you are?
Sorry, that, on page three?
Okay.
Line three, it should say but not be limited to. Just need to add the word the B.
I'm, I'll take care of that.
Motion to approve policy one point four oh four and policy six point two zero zero.
We have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Code, to approve policy one point four oh, or as well as policy six point two zero zero, bottom of the paper, say I. And the vote, that motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to new business. The first item there under new business is two good programs for fifth graders, and I believe we have Mayor Guess here to speak, and also I believe that you have a hand now?
Should be one in front of me. Just for you to have something to reference to, I told the sheriff's office and the grant writer out of my office, I would be more than glad to come and do this because I actually taught that program almost just exactly like this. What this is, is it's a part of the violent crimes initiative grant that we were able to obtain at the sheriff, uh, mayor's office, provided law enforcement in the county, they got appropriations, freeze department, then the competitive part altogether, it was a two million dollar grant we were able to obtain, and prevention was part of that. So what better way to enact some kind of prevention than educate young people? So fifth grade's always been the target, I'm not sure, we don't need to look at maybe third grade, but if you'll look at this, it's very, 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 very similar to the DARE program that was taught several years ago, drug abuse resistance education, which when I was an instructor, and I know the board wanted to see this, to prove it, to know what was going on in elementary schools. What will happen is the, all the elementary SROs will go to a training. I would prefer it was a little longer, but I don't set that road, but they will go and be certified to teach the lead program. Come back and, my best recommendation, that's to coordinate with the principal what time of day, it's ten lessons, one day away for forty-five minutes. Where the grant comes in to really be a help is when the program is over, you have a graduation with, your graduation certificate, it's the binders, the, as the kids call it, the swag that goes with it, stickers, pencils, workbooks, other kind of things, can get a little bit pricey. We taught every school in the county, I think maybe except Clark and Decker, you could do all of that, when I taught it, it was probably fifteen thousand dollars. This grant will cover that, way past that, but that's what this is about. You look, you look on that top page, which is the more critical part of this to me, it doesn't really break it down, but it's more of a syllabus, and it's got some very effective things in there to, that you need to engage these fifth graders with, to me probably the most important thing of this whole thing, is the decision-making process. And that's, I think, lesson two, they get right to that, because decision-making, like any other successful habit or any other successful thing, if you can make it a habit, it becomes more, more effective, and you make, you'll find yourself making better decisions more often if you have a, some UT fans are gonna snarl when I say this, if you follow the process. And that's what DARE taught, define, assess, respond, evaluate. Now, I've not looked at the actual lesson plan for this, but I guarantee you something a lot like that. So you have a process you go through to ensure, try to help you make good decisions, it addresses the effects of alcohol, marijuana, I don't, I didn't see tobacco, I'm sure it's in there, relationship building, and one part of here, it even talks about how to deal with emotions, control your temper, how to get along with your classmates. It talks about peer pressure, which is very, very critical, and how to respond to that, and it doesn't just say, say no, because I think we know that doesn't, that's not really a good strategy, but it tells you other methods to use if you're receiving negative peer pressure, and how to excel positive peer pressure. You know, like encouraging a classmate to help study with you for a test that you know is gonna be a little tough, those kind of things. So the way I envision that is, is these men and women go to the training, they come back, they coordinate with their principal, what's the best time, what's the best time of year? I would say farther back toward the early part of the year, where we're not close to T cap, would probably be the better time to get that done, and we don't have the discombobulation of scheduling our SROs like we did before, because the sheriff's committed to send all eight elementary SROs to the train, so they don't know anywhere, they're right there with their materials, they already know the children, they already know the administrators, it just works better that way. So that's, that's what this is in an overview, I don't know any reason in the world why we would not do that. It was a successful program when we had it before, like I said, we call it the DARE program. The only difference really is, the state or the grant part of what we're doing, will pay for this, but they won't pay for that. I don't know how that happened, I got my own ideas, but just to look at this, this is a good program also, it's just like anything else, it's written, one thing, it's teachers, what makes you know. And I don't know if y'all know this, but most cops are pretty effective teachers because they're at ease with people. So I'm looking forward to trying to get this off the ground with the school system, yes.
So I guess I was just wondering, like, is this something that like the guidance counselors could do instead? Because it sounds like those are people.
I wouldn't suggest that, I would suggest the law enforcement people do it, they're the ones that have the resident expertise in things like alcohol and drug use and effect. Not only do they, and I'm not saying counselors don't, but I'm saying cops do. Not only do they have that, they see the effects, like what I would try to do, because what's the quickest way to get a child not, or to do something you don't want to do, is tell them not to do it, like cases. So the strategy behind this is, don't do this, but if you do, here are the effects and the consequences, just know that going, going into it, this will happen, and these cops can sit there and say, I can tell you that will happen, because I've seen that happen, and I can put you in the car, take you down here, show you a hundred and fifteen people, that it happened too. So that's why I think it's more effective coming from them, and it's a little bit of an intention here when they walk in dressed like that gentleman back there, and they teach class in uniform, they don't come in plainclothes. Not, not an intimidation, but an intention here, and what it also lets those students know is, these are, these are human beings too, and they've got feelings and they've got emotions, and hey, that guy, after ten weeks, hey, he kinda likes me. So it can only be positive, if done right, and I have every confidence that these deputies will do it right.
And they're already here with the students.
Oh yeah, and that's another thing, you take the fifth graders at Broadview, they've, JJ, four, since they've been there, because I know how long he's been in, that's a big, that's a big plus for it also, and that each SRO doing it at their own school was a big plus, because when this first came out, we tried this a couple of years ago, we only had like two, which was a mistake, because trying to jumble that schedule was a, was a little bit of an issue, but I mean, these guys were there anyway, why not, why not give them a project? That they will be good at it, this wasn't good, if it wasn't effective, if I had not done this myself, probably, I'd be cautious about recommending it, but I can tell you standing here that it works, because I saw it work. And when you have people come up to you, they're eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old and say, or my case, older than that, say, you were my DARE teacher, here's what I remember. Now that had a positive effect in some form or fashion, it just did, so that's where we are, I appreciate your consideration there. We're ready to go, we're just waiting for you guys to approve it, and we'll be ready to move on.
I think it's a great program. Is there any parent permission with those who live?
Not that I know of, it's just part of the, I hate to speak about that because it's been so long since I did it. All I did to teach DARE was go to each principal and say, hey, would you be receptive to this? Things change, rules change, I get them, that's fine, but as far as a parent permission, it's just part of a curriculum, I assume that's why Dr. Holman went and got, didn't know what we were teaching.
I, I would most definitely think that if someone wanted to opt their child out, I would think most definitely could. When you look at it, when, even just when I take a glance and just look at the topics, goal setting, decision making, identifying and managing emotions, when you start looking at those types of things, I would look at it from a tiered approach, because these, this is a reinforcement that they're gonna be able to do, your school counselors, your teachers, they're going through these and talking about goal setting in their classrooms, this is just another layer of support that will be, you can look at it from a tiered intervention piece.
So how long is the training?
I think these are two days. It's done at Toledo, Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy, and what they will do, in my experience, what they will do when they go up there, they'll take those two days and they'll go read one of these lessons, they have a three-ring binder with the notebook in it, and the lesson plans are laid out, bullet point, bullet point, I mean, there it is. So really, what, what the people teaching is that are in the law enforcement and have to worry about is their charisma and their ability to keep these kids' attention, instead of, the lessons are done for them. They need to review them and go over them before they go in to teach, obviously, because you need to know what you're talking about when you step in the door, but other than that, I mean, the actual putting it together is laid out for them, so they'll review that, they'll be ready to go.
Will they be pulled from their duties to do the training?
Oh, they're already in the school. So you go in a classroom, take your... So you go in a classroom, take your forty-five minute class, then you go out and do a perimeter check, which is about, about what you would be doing anyway.
But to complete the two-day training, off-site?
No, because that's during fall break.
Okay.
So what you're saying there? I ask that question. Yeah, that's, that's during fall break. I'm sure the, SROs will like that, but that's okay, they need the training.
You mentioned you wanted to do this earlier in the year, correct, before T cap? Um, did you think about doing it maybe before summer? Cause I feel like that's when people are most at risk of falling into tracks with this, because when the teachers are around the students, they see them every day, they can kind of tell if something's wrong with them, or they picked up some of these bad habits, some alcohol or nicotine. Um, is there any way you could maybe do something, was it summer, where the teacher isn't around the student every day and can't quite tell if something's wrong with them?
You mean when school's not going on?
Or before you get lapsed?
Uh, that'd be up to the director of schools and the principals. I just think about testing in T cap. And I don't know that there would be time post that to get all ten lessons in, would be a problem. Those would be the two things, obviously, right out, right out of the gate, that would be the issue with that. I know what you're saying, but just it's a timing and testing and, and calendar thing with, with this. Anyone else? Thank you for your time. It's just a little bit different on this side of the page. But I do appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. And like I said, we'll be ready to go when you say it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your recommendation?
I recommend that the board, we, well, probably utilize it out there in schools.
Uh, motion to approve the, uh, two good programs for fifth graders that Mayor Guess has, votes to us tonight.
Say. We have a motion to approve the two good program for fifth graders, by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. I'm just abstaining from the discussion. That motion carries. Okay, Mr. Item two, which is the August financial report, so you voted on this, Ms. June?
It's easy.
That's right.
There is, what do we got, is that the, that is the June financial report, take into mind that that does not include all the revenues that we will receive, received in July for the month of June. We did well for the end of the year. Our, we did have about a two million dollar change in our fund balance. However, our revenues were more than our expenditures, but you voted to budget money out of fund balance during the year last year, so that's where that deficit came from. We, we budgeted more money out of fund balance than we actually spent. So, um, that's what resulted in that, that two point two million dollar adjustment in the fund balance from the end of fiscal year twenty-two to the end of fiscal year twenty-three. The July, July report is in there, there's not a lot to it, not a lot happens revenue-wise in the month of July, um, and most of the big expenditures on there are those big annual insurance premiums, liabilities, things like that. There are a couple of budget amendments on there, nothing unusual. Um, these are some on and in budget amendments that, uh, simply moving some money, some discretionary funds around, some salary lines. There were a couple of different pages on the budget that didn't get caught on the main page. Our budget comprises of about twenty-five different tabs. So I think we missed about four thousand dollars getting moved over that we had to re-budget. Um, we did tweak that every year, but it's all formulated. So we have re-budgeted out all of Jesse Sheehan's state grants, and then we have re-budgeted the federal grants that have been approved for E Plan. I think right now there's only three that have been fully approved through E Plan, other than the consolidated. Those are the federal grants that have been approved. And if we have, just, this is, for your records, this is the starting and ending balance of all of the, um, school reserves, the reserve. Some of the different programs.
They won't interrupt the motion?
Motion to receive the file, June monthly financial report, July financial report, school, June school reserves.
We have a motion by Mr. Williams to approve the three basically financial reports. We have a second.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, that was to receive the file, approved.
Motion to approve the August twenty twenty-three and statute amendment one, two, and the federal statute amendment.
Okay. Second. We have motion by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Cole. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. That motion carries. That takes us to item number three, which is S R two point O and three point O. This, um, Mr. Craftery spoke to that earlier, uh, is simply just an application that we have to sign. It's not changing anything or doing anything out of order. It just has to be a print by the board. Second. We have motion to approve, by Ms. Jones, second by Mr. Williams, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That motion carries as well. That takes us to item four, which is approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual agenda. Ms. Patty, I think this is as usual, or it changes on that? I didn't see it just.
Just notes.
Motion to approve the annual agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Roberts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item five, which is petty cash request, there's one there from Holland, I believe, uh, for their following of sports. And I believe from F C H S, um, Dr. Alsop asked that they'd be able to increase theirs due to the fact that probably tickets are going to be going up, uh, because of the cost of initiating and all the costs that are associated with this four-year program.
Motion to approve the Holland and the F C H S petty cash request.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Williams to approve the petty cash request, second by Ms. Cole, all in favor, say aye. Uh, post. That motion carries. Takes us to item number six, which is the approval of the Sicily Bank trustees, Ms. Leder.
This is a, an annual duty, I guess, or I don't, duty, I, I just couldn't think what the right word was. I am very glad to tell you that two members of your board have graciously agreed to serve as Sicily Bank trustees this coming year. Uh, Ms. Lipton and Ms. Jones, they, they both served for several years and they're tremendous help, and I, I do appreciate that. The, the Sicily Bank trustees is made up of two board members, two certified members, and two classified staff members. And they actually look at ever request for days from Sicily Bank. They can approve those, they can deny them. Uh, if they approve, they have to approve in accordance of twenty days. They can approve up to sixty days for someone who's requesting it and has the appropriate backup for that particular, um, request. But, uh, these are the people who graciously agreed to serve this year.
Motion to approve the Sicily Bank trustees.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Roberts, and a second by Ms. Maranski, to approve the Sicily, Sicily Bank trustee list, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. That motion carries. Please note the schedule of meetings, that's in item J down there, you can read those as well as I can. Is there anything further?
Do we have a school committee meeting anytime soon?
Um, typically, that, that meeting will be, it was going to be tomorrow night, but Dr. Holman has training and he's gonna be absent for two days. So in talking with, um, Mr. Anderson, who was in here, he said, let's just go do it this month, he said, we'll look forward to it next month. So typically, that's gonna be on the Tuesday after the final, okay? So it'll be what the twelve?
Is our district meeting that week too?
No. We did?
I think so.
Fall district?
For September fourteenth is fall district meeting.
So that's twelve. We'll be.
It's a busy week.
The good news is we don't have to go all that far in fall district. It's not, I can't, it's close. It's not March, though.
No.
It's bad.
I think it is.
Yeah. Anything else?
Want to do a turn?
Second.